I'm calling the meeting to order, the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Silver City for Tuesday, August the 5th, 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. If you would be so good as to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director. Could I please ask for a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Present.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. We do therefore have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
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 Are there any comments on the agenda?
I'd like to move approval of the minutes to the next regularly scheduled meeting of this commission.
We have a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes to the next regular meeting. Have we a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any debate or discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. Hearing none. The approval of the minutes is hereby postponed, and with that, I would then ask if we then can approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none. Those please in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Voice vote, the agenda is approved. The next item on the list is reports. Are there any reports?
Not at this time, Chair.
Not having any. The next item on the agenda is community input. I see we have some people here. Is anyone wish to speak other than on the public hearing, which we'll be conducting in a little bit? So just general public input. Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The case number is CU 25-02, a conditional use request for short-term rental within the commercial highway zoning district. The property is legally described as subdivision Fraser Block 209, Lot 1, and Lot 3 through Lot 6, and Lot 8 and Lot 10, and Lot 12 and part of Lot 1 PT, Lot 3, part of Lot 3, part of Lot 4, all of... Part of Lot 6, part of Lot 8, part of Lot 10, part of Lot 12, a total of 12.703 acres, lying north and east of the center of Arroyo, AKA Track B joint tenants, addressed as 1001 North Pope Street. The applicant is Edwin Garland. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so my first question is going to be, does anyone on the commission have any conflicts of interest or have had any ex parte discussions about this case with anyone?
No.
No.
We probably ought to do a roll call on that, if you'd be so kind.
Commissioner Stone?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
No.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
No.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
No. Therefore, we still have a quorum. This meeting is conducted under Robert's Rules of Order, which means that all addressing anyone who addresses either staff or any member of the audience or other commissioners shall do that through the chair and vice versa. This is...I would like to ask something new. Do we have any letters that were submitted as part of the case?
Chairman, yes. We have two letters that were submitted during the citizen participation portion of the public hearing process. They are included in the packet you all received. One is from Dr. Steiner's office, which I believe a representative from them is here today, as well as another from HMS, and it is documented in the file.
And were these notarized, or they simply letters?
They are simply letters.
In accordance with recent guidance, I should point out to the commissioners that these are public input as opposed to testimony, and that is my understanding. Is that your understanding also, Madam Director?
Yes, Chairman.
This is a conditional use permit. The town will present the town's position on this, and then the applicant will present their position. There are opportunities for everyone to cross-examine, if you so choose, and ask clarifying questions. Anyone who wishes to testify or speak, this has to be done under oath. So if you even think you may want to, please come forward to the podium, and we will then swear you in. And when you do that, we need to have a log of who was sworn in. I would ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jackie Leah.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give in this matter...
That the testimony I am about to give in this matter...
Before the commission...
Before the commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth...
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. And if, Madam Director, if you could make sure that everyone's logged in. Thank you. The next step is for staff to be kind enough to present the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman. Request CU 25-02, a conditional use permit for the installation of a short-term rental in the Highway Commercial District at the property addressed at 1001 North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser Block 209, Lot 1 and Lot 3 through Lot 6, and Lot 8 and Lot 10 and Lot 12, part Lot 1, part Lot 3, part Lot 4, all, part Lot 6, part Lot 8, part Lot 10, part Lot 12, at .703 acres, lying north and east center of the Arroyo, AKA Track B joint tenants. The applicant is Edwin Garland. A short-term rental within the Highway Commercial District requires a conditional use permit per the town's Town of Silver City Land Use Code and zoning of 2010. Mr. Garland submitted the conditional use application to the Community Development Department on June 16th, 2025. This will be the first step in the proposed development of his commercial property. If the applicant receives a conditional use permit, he may move forward with the commercial development review process. After a departmental review of the application, the code enforcement, fire, police, and Public Works had no comment. The Engineering Department has observed that the structure is located in a specialty floods hazard area known as the floodway. The Utility and Meters Department noted that the additional residential use of the property would require additional fixture fees and a possible additional waste meter. The citizens' participation report, as required by Section 6.2.11 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contracted 41 landowners identified by the Grant County Assessor's parcel data by U.S. Mail within 300 feet of the projected area. Of the 41 landowners notified, five letters were returned, three were unable to forward, and two were sent to vacant PO boxes also unable to forward. The Community Development Department reviews...received two responses, one in the form of email, the other in the form of letter, both in favor of the proposal. The findings: The Planning and Zoning Commission will apply and make relevant all four of the following findings to the request at hand. Number one: This request will not endanger the public health or safety. Number two: Will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties. Number three: Will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. And number four: Will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. Recommendation: The Community Development Department staff recommends that this request be approved as it meets all four of the findings as required. Thank you, Chair.
Does that complete your case in chief?
Yes, Chair.
Do any of the members of the public who have been sworn in wish to question or ask questions or query what has just been read into the record? I'm sorry, I forgot to push the darn button. Does anyone wish to cross-examine the staff report? Hearing none. The next item is for the applicant. If you would be kind enough to present your case, we do have your documentation here, and if you could please address those four required findings. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm requesting the conditional use permit so I can convert this facility into a place where it may house traveling nurses and traveling doctors. This is a business I'm in. The fact that I'll be bringing in additional medical people to the community actually enhances and does not distract from the community. And a side note to that, I have these facilities in other locations, and I've had nurses and doctors that have stayed here in Silver City end up in my other locations, specifically in Alamogordo. Two of them have stated that they would not come back to Silver because they loved the town, but the facilities, they were unable to find suitable facilities. The main reason they couldn't find suitable facilities is because they all carry pets. They bring their pets with them. So in all of mine, I provide a rear yard that's contained so the animals can roam freely and not be contained, not be in the houses all day long. What were the other remarks, other concerns? I don't recall them, I'm sorry. Now I'm fixing to get refreshed. This is not going to injure the value of the adjoining properties. Actually, what I'm through doing, what it is I'm going to do, it should enhance the value. It's going to be hard to enhance the value of HMS. I mean, that's there. My neighbor to the south is the Silver Ditch. I'm not sure how I'm going to enhance the value of the Silver Ditch. And beyond that is the new food...the park. And speaking of the park, as I was repairing this fence in the back of my property, I almost closed off a pathway that's through the Silver Ditch that leads over to Pope Street. And I didn't do that after several of the residents that used that on a daily basis complained, "If you block us off here, we're going to have to go through the park. And if we go through the park, we have to deal with all the drugies in there." Just thought you might like to know that. That's quite a bad blight on the town. That should be corrected. I'm not concerned about it, but the residents definitely were. So I left my pathway open for them to be able to come through the property. In harmony with the area which is located, I'm not sure how quite how to address that. I'm going to upgrade the appearance of the facility. It's going to be a territorial design, and I guess that would be considered in harmony with the area. I really, I'm a little lost. It has a better specified than just that. And converting this to a short-term rental, and let me back off of that a little bit. When I bring in a nurse or a doctor or any medical professional to my other units, they all sign a 90-day clause, a rental agreement, with not only me, but with the facility or the doctor or medical complex they go to work with. I understand that short-term is limited to only 30 days, and so the way in which I would propose to do this, if you come in and you're a physician and you're going to go to work for HMS or Algo Medical or one of the other medical facilities in town, I would do 30-day rentals with 30-day extensions. I wished I could do a 90-day, but apparently that's not the case, not allowed currently under the present zoning, so...but I will be in conformance with the town's study. I believe it was 2012 in which you stated you needed additional facilities here in town. I may be wrong on the year, but I will be taking this from what was formerly a amount of a medical facility into a housing facility which really complies with your town's comprehensive plan. And that's all I have to allow. Any questions, please?
Thank you. So that completes your case in chief?
Sir?
Right. Does anyone who's been sworn in wish to ask any questions? Any commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Garland?
Yes, sir.
How many square feet are in the property? It might be in here someplace, but I didn't see it.
The facility itself is 1,238 square feet.
And how many residents would be in there?
I don't bring in more than two at a time. Sometimes it's a husband-and-wife team, and sometimes it's a team.
So it's not a duplex, it's just...
It's a single facility.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I don't think so.
Next on the list is anyone who's been sworn in wish to present. Thank you very much, sir.
I'm Colleen Steiner, and I am a partner of the medical office that's a block from the proposed property, and I think he has done a very good job of keeping that property up and keeping it clean, and I don't think many people might realize what a task that is, but there are a lot of litterers in this town, and after special events, I do quite a bit of cleanup, and even just on a daily basis, at the back of our parking lot, there are wrappers, and people have had little picnics and things. So I think it's extremely valuable to the community to have that property in use with someone that maintains it well, and I think it would be especially challenging at its location there near the ditch. I would imagine that his rate of litter might be higher than mine. So I am delighted that someone wants to use this property, and I also think commercial property sits empty for years here, and I think that degrades the value of all the property around it. So I am 110% for this project.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for that? Hearing none. Is there anyone else left who wishes to speak, whether sworn in or not, because we can always swear you in? The next step is to ask for a motion, and I will clarify something, that all motions that are made on permits must always be made in the positive regardless of the outcome. The reason for that is to avoid confusion. Does any commissioner wish to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I move we approve CU 25-02, a conditional use permit for the installation of a short-term rental in the Highway Commercial District at the property addressed as 101 North Pope Street. We've already read this twice. I'm going to stop there.
Any objections to having abbreviated the description? Hearing none from anyone. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
I have a question. Is everyone submitted the findings, the required findings, and is happy with their... No questions or any... In which case, the result of the notice, the ayes have it, which means the conditional use permit will be issued. It takes a while. There will be a notice of decision issued by the Community Development Staff. There is a process for appeal, and there are timelines which begin when the notice of decision is mailed, and then there's a short time period in which people can appeal. If one is going to appeal, you have to state what your interest is in the case, and it could be related to the property or it could be related to financial interest. And that appeal, if made, would then go to the town council. If that doesn't happen, then the conditional use permit is done. Any further comments before we close this hearing? Any question? Any further comments, Madam Director?
Chairman, if I may add, regarding the appeal process, an appealant would have to identify if there was any errors made by staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission when garnering their decision about this case, so it is very specific as to what the appeal process looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very true. In which case, hearing no other comments, that closes the hearing. The next item on the agenda...
If I may?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you very much. Sitting all will as well. I believe you'll be very pleased with what you see as this progresses, as the reconstruction of the building progresses. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. The next item on the agenda is new business, to see if we should create a subcommittee for the Land Use Code update, open house, and establish the date and time, and I would ask the Community Development Director if that is still a requirement given the meetings that we have coming up next week.
Yes, Chairman. Regarding the Subcommittee on the Land Use Code Update, so we do have the meeting next week with the council, where we are bringing the resolution for the adoption, for the recommendation of the adoption of the housing plan before the council, and then we had discussed in the past about a potential need for a Subcommittee for an open house. Currently, if the commission would still like to follow through with that, we can establish one and discuss amongst the subcommittees and report at the following next regular meeting, or we can not move forward with the Subcommittee if that is the wishes of the commission.
And so everyone knows, every two weeks, Community Development meets with the chair and one other commissioner, and what we've seen is that we have a lot of possible changes to the Land Use Code, and we have two choices. Do we go through all of them, and there's very roughly 40 typographical issues which would be easy to handle, there's roughly 140 comments from the public, and so we group those into groups. If we try to do everything, that in those lists, we could never complete it in time, we believe, for this town council to be able to approve it, and then we will move into next year when there may be changes on the council. The recommendation that the chair and the Community Development Director came up with is it is better to focus on a few items and do them well rather than all the items, and perhaps not do quite as well. That would mean there would be items left over, and I believe it would be relevant for me to now make what is called previous notice of an amendment to the bylaws. We think this is so important that we are going to be recommending at our next meeting in September, that we amend something previously adopted, and I will hand out the motion so that everyone's got a copy of it. I will read it as part of previous notice. We cannot discuss it today because it isn't, of course, hasn't been noticed. But nevertheless, I will read it, and I have a printed copy for you. Previous notice: I will be moving in September to amend the planning and zoning bylaws and rules and procedures previously adopted by inserting into Section 1.9, meeting and hearing schedules, a new Section D, which will read, "In January of each year, the commission shall identify from the commission itself, the Community Development Department, all the town council, areas of concern, and shall select one or more such areas and develop solutions resulting in a text amendment to the Land Use and Zoning Code for presentation to the town council for adoption." The objective is that each year, we progressively pick up on issues that have been found with the code and address it. That way, 10 years from now, we will have had 10 revisions, and that way, we don't have to go through a major rewrite. So this is technically previous notice. We can't discuss it today, but we will in September. So since the actual item was to create a Subcommittee for Land Use Code Updates and Open House and establish date and time, and since the recommendation of the director and the chair, and was assisted in this by the vice chair, it is likely that this motion may fail, but we have to make the motion in the positive. To save time, and I am allowed to do it, I move to create a Subcommittee for the Land Use Code Update, open house, and establish a date and time. Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any debate on that motion?
I just like to reiterate that we probably don't need this. That we don't need it.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I also just kind of want to give the commission a little additional information. So based on how involved the land use code is, it has been told by the consultants that increasing the scope of what we have been looking at, specifically the affordability portion of the land use code, expanding that to the entirety of the code would also include, it would incur more cost onto the town. So I, as Director, would like to voice that doing the annual updates would benefit the town as a whole, just moving forward, being adaptable with the types of use that are happening in areas that may change over time, and this will ultimately save the town some money. So that's something that I would also just like to note during the discussion period.
Thank you, and I would point out that annual updates are... Thank you, and I would point out that annual updates are rather revolutionary, but we've been a very active P&amp;Z commission, and all commissioners have been heavily involved. So, while I am entirely impartial and unbiased, I think there's a lot of merit in what the Director has said.
So, an open house, what would be the structure of it, and what would be the goal of it?
Chairman, we will still have what we would be calling, I guess, town halls, informing the town of what the proposed updates for the land use code will be, and of course, there's always opportunity for the public to voice concerns, you know, in favor, against, whatever that may be. But as far as the open house, which would allow expanding the scope of what we're discussing currently, which is mainly focused on affordability and housing and some of the updates and uses throughout the zones, it could increase the scope of the project, which could increase the cost of the project. So, we will inform the public of everything that is being discussed, of the potential land use code update, which would be ultimately the decision of the town council, but we would be kind of focusing our efforts on specific topics, rather than opening it up to the code as a whole at this time. But those inputs that are given during that time could be compiled similarly, like the affordability conversation that we had, and they could be discussed at a later date at one of the incremental updates that the Chairman is proposing in the motion for next month.
And I would add to that, if I may, that all of the public comments we received are retained in a document, the document's about fifty-six pages, and we've grouped them into classes that we discussed, we added them into those classes. So, no information is going to be lost. The question will be in January, which priorities will we give to make the updates?
So, it does sound like we don't need to do this?
That is one possible interpretation.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing, is that not?
I am being impartial at this point in time. I believe Commissioner Middlestead had a comment?
Chairman, what I like about this is we don't know what's gonna happen between now and January, and it keeps the process very much alive for us to continue our work, because we're going to make some proposals, and then there's going to be an election, and so I would, my personal belief is that creating a system where we more regularly address these issues and avoid the cost of doing any open house right now, and looking at the entirety of the zoning code and trying to bring the public along, it's a big mouthful. It's a lot for the public to, for us and the public to take on at one time.
And what it will enable us to do with the annual updates is to catch things as when they're beginning to be a problem and fix them. And so, for that reason, we felt it's better to focus on a few critical items right now, and pick up the rest next year, and the year after, and the year after that. This commission has gone from being a peaceful, sleepy commission that does the occasional hearing, to getting involved in serious planning issues, and under NMSA 783-191, et cetera, we are a planning commission. So, that's what it's going to turn us into, and I think that's very innovative, and I believe it's something that the council will probably find great favor. To achieve that, the recommendation that you must decide is, do you still want to have a subcommittee to help with an open house, which you may or may not find helpful? It appears as if discussion is somewhat died down. Yes, go ahead.
I don't know exactly what to say about it, because there's no timeframe, there's no idea of what this, I mean, I did hear you talking a little bit about what it might entail, but can it be postponed to think about doing it at some other time, if that's necessary, deemed necessary?
Might I suggest, under Robert's rules, that postpone would not necessarily be appropriate? However, the postponement is applicable to a session, and with a commission, a session equals one meeting, which means should, in the future, the commission decide it would be nice to have an open house and a subcommittee to work for it, that is certainly appropriate to reintroduce that particular issue.
If I may?
Please.
I don't see any harm in declining to go this route right now. I think if we decide we wanna have an open house, as you said, we can reintroduce the idea and do it, bring it up again.
I like the idea of informing the public of what it is we're up to here, and they, some people say, well, just do your job, and they'll figure out that you're doing a good job. Well, no, you have to tell them. You have to let them know what you're up to, and I think putting ourselves out in the public view in any format is good. It lets people know that there are people thinking about this. I'm sure people sit around and say, well, golly, what are those people doing anyway? Who's in charge of this? You know, and I'm sure they have a lot of things on their minds. But it'd be good if they knew there was a body dedicated to the, and very capable staff dedicated to thinking about this. I like the idea of putting ourselves out there in the public view.
And the way we have done that in the past is with public input, and a good example was almost a year ago, we got 191, I think it was, comments just in one meeting. So, we will definitely be encouraging the public to get involved, very definitely. And by the way, the document which has all the comments we have today, that is a public document, and if anyone wants a copy of it, it can be emailed. So?
I think it is relevant to mention a conversation I had this morning with a citizen of Silver City, who shall remain nameless, but can be described in a summary way as someone who described himself as a fifty-year veteran of Silver City bureaucracy. And it was his comment to me that every ten years, a new planning, a new housing plan is developed, and then it sits for another decade, and nothing is done, quote, "Nothing is done." To reach people like that, I agree with what the Commissioner just said, I think we need to err, if we err at all, on the side of reaching out to the public, especially to someone like him. In fact, I told him, well, I'll give you more information about what we're doing. I mean, I was not insulted in any way, I'm a new member of this, but it does, you know, pique your personal involvement, your sense of responsibility in a process like this. So, I would, I believe at this point, vote for doing everything, even if it seems perhaps unnecessary, including open houses and any other mechanism by which we can reach out and quell that feeling amongst the citizenship, especially someone who actually is a fifty-year veteran of dealing with Silver City bureaucracy, in an active way, not just as a passive player, but involved with land use issues and planning. Thank you.
Adam Director?
Chairman, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Stone. I also understand how plans get left on shelves, and one thing that during this process, myself, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, did that I feel is innovative comparatively to how it may have been done in the past, was we started working on the housing plan before we did land use code changes. So, the housing plan identifies the issues, and then the land use code is the law that implements those regulations. So, by highlighting what can be, what the issues are and how housing is impacted by the rules that we currently have in place, we then can adapt those rules to what is happening, to be able to help people, you know, developers, things of that nature, to be able to create more livable housing. So, I think that's something really important that I really wanna highlight, that this commission, as well as the Community Development Department, has done, is they have utilized public funds during the housing and strategic plan update to directly, directly impact legislation to help people with the issues that have been identified. So, I do really wanna commend this commission for their openness and their willingness for the public to be engaged in this process. In the very beginning, whenever we were at kind of the inception of the housing plan, planning phase, we did have stakeholder meetings, we did reach out to several different types of individuals in the community, we did post several public notices for people to engage in discussion candidly with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I do absolutely agree that everyone in the city has a unique perspective that can be beneficial to the planning process. And so, definitely, we want to continue having these discussions, because it's something that is never going to stop. We are always going to live in a community that is going to have changes regarding commercial use, residential use, industrial use, whatever that may be, and we need to understand what's going on on the ground to ensure that the laws that we have in place are reflective of those changes, rather than hindering those developments. So, I think that that's something really important, and I do appreciate the commission's willingness to have those things, and we absolutely will have them moving forward, as we have.
Yeah, we did that two days, and I think you touched on, which had quite a lot of feedback from all sorts of stakeholders, and in no way are we saying we're not gonna have an open house. What we're, what the motion says is, do we create a subcommittee now for that? We can still have the open house, if that is what the commission wants, it's just the, do we actually need to create a subcommittee? That was a motion that I suggested in the previous meeting, for us to think about it. So, there's no opposition to an open house, it's just, do we need a subcommittee to do it? Because technically, what we need to do is the Community Development Director, or the Chair, under the bylaws, can call a special meeting, and then we handle it that way. And that is probably a more efficient way, and less intrusive on commissioners' times, because it's easier to work out when it's a good time to do it, as for example, in the five o'clock special meeting we had today, it's easy to do.
I agree, that's just, we don't wanna have another, I don't want to have another subcommittee.
Any further comments, sir? Any further comments? Hearing none, we do have a motion, a second, to create a subcommittee for the land use update in open house and establish a date and time. This in no way prevents having an open house at a later date, by way of explanation. I believe it would be a good idea to do a roll call on that motion.
Commissioner Stone?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlestead?
No.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
I'll name him. And if I could ask, how many ayes and how many nos?
Four ayes and one no.
Both. You didn't have to know. You're not supposed to know. Are you supposed to know?
We have four ayes?
Four nos?
Four nos.
Four nos, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Most of us have got two ayes up here, if you understand that.
I apologize, thank you very much.
So, my understanding is that the noes carried it, and there will not be a subcommittee, is that everyone's understanding? Yes. We don't want to have a misunderstanding, because sometimes, they can be rather involved in those discussions.
I apologize, Commissioner, thank you.
Right, well, with that then, that action item for the subcommittee failed, it's not going to happen, the next item on the agenda is creating a subcommittee for zoning research along Highway 15 Pinos Altos Corridor. We made that as previous notice at the last meeting, because, why? We've had a couple of zone change requests along that corridor, both of which resulted in a zone change. It meant the legal requirements for not being spot zoning. However, it was the feeling of several commissioners, as I recall, and also the feeling of the town attorney, look, why don't we just check and see if perhaps the neighborhood itself would rather go from being what it is zoned at present to mixed use? And so, the suggestion is, how do we do that? And we could form a subcommittee, which would be no more than two people for quorum reasons, to simply go out, find out who owns what land, have a chat with them, and get a sense from the neighborhood, what would you like the town to do as far as zoning goes? Do you want to stay as it is, remembering that if it's a residential property and you try to sell it, there can be problems? With mixed use, nothing will change. You just have the ability to continue to be residential forever. So, is there any interest in any commissioners who would like to go out and do that research? Count this a name on it.
Yes. I think it's a good idea, I'm not exactly sure how to do it, but I do think, looking at that strip through that, that whole neighborhood, that that's going to be probably necessary to do.
Necessary.
To talk to people and possibly change it.
So, the sense of the commissioner is, yes, this is a good idea, I was wondering if I heard the names of volunteers. Either way, you can only volunteer yourself.
No, you volunteer. I wonder, I mean, I know the town staff is stretched, but it just seems it's appropriate for them to be out making that, those calls or those letters, not us. That's just a perspective, I do think the work is important.
Can it be letters sent out to the whole neighborhood?
The reason I bring up letters and calls is because my understanding is that many may not be owner occupied, finding contact, at least preliminary contact is better done through a letter.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlestead? Yes, so the process would be roughly, and this, you know, is similar to the process of informing the landowners about a public hearing. So, we would send letters out to the public based on who is the property owner, and then see if there's any feedback from those individuals, because as land use goes, the property owner must be the one to initiate that process. So, definitely, there will be an engagement with staff, it is completely up to the discretion of the commission if they would like to be involved in any capacity.
Would Community Development Department like the help of any commissioners?
Chairman help is always appreciated.
In which case?
I would be willing to help do that.
We have, we have two, likely more?
Having gone door to door in my previous existence as a Fed, I really respect and appreciate that you're stepping up.
Well, we won't go door to door first.
Right, yeah. So, the sense of the commission is, this is an important thing to do, but we do not necessarily have to create a sub. but we do not necessarily have to create a subcommittee. And there are two willing volunteers who would help community development. Does anyone see a problem with that?
No.
I can't see any problems under the Open Meetings Act either, by limiting it to two people. In which case, it's probably a good idea to say no to creating a subcommittee. In my usual impartial way, I thought I would mention that. Okay.
So just for clarification, that means we circumvent a motion, a second, and a vote. We just have two volunteers who personally are stepping forward to, to answer this call.
The chair's recommendation is that there would be a motion to create the subcommittee, which would be seconded, and those who like the approach that has been suggested would then vote no on the motion to create a subcommittee.
I move we create a subcommittee for zoning research along Highway fifteen slash Pinos Altos Road Corridor.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I think it'd be a good idea to do a roll call. And I remind you that an aye would create a subcommittee, and a no would not create a subcommittee, and still enable two very willing volunteers to help community development. Could we please do a roll call on that one?
Commissioner Stone?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
No.
Commissioner Middlestead?
No.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
No. And with that, the subcommittee motion has been defeated calmly and smoothly. I'll probably get in a chopper for now. Next item on the agenda is reports from Stone.
Thank you, Chairman. That was five nos. I just want to redeem myself from the previous count. As of now, I do not believe we have any applications for the regular September meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there's that. As far as anything else, there is a reminder that we will be submitting the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-two, a resolution to recommend to the town council the approval of the Town of Silver City Housing and Strategic Plan of twenty twenty-five. That will be on the regular agenda for the regular meeting on August twelfth at six P M in this facility. Just as a friendly reminder, we could also post, if the Planning and Zoning Commission would wish, a legal notice advising the public that the Planning and Zoning Commission will be in attendance, but no business will be discussed. So there's that.
So that's August twelfth here at?
Six P M.
Can you remind us of our, can you remind us of our other meetings next week?
Yeah.
I forgot my phone.
And I forgot my notebook.
Okay.
But I can send out an email with a reminder with myself and the chairman, CC'd everyone else, B C C'd, as to remove any potential Open Meetings Act violations and send a reminder of some of the meetings that have been discussed based on the land use code updates.
Thank you.
And yes, I do strongly recommend a legal notice because that way, any commissioner is welcome to attend and there won't be any issues.
Yeah. Is it the week after? Yeah, that's, okay. Thank you.
So it's my understanding there won't be an email forthcoming letting us know what the next dates are. With that, next item on the agenda is reports from the commission. Any reports or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Stone had mentioned the New Mexico State Salute. And we're going to make that part of our bylaws. Do we need to add that to the bylaws next time, or? I don't even know how, I don't even know what's, what it says. I'm just curious. But if it's something we should do, if it's customary here for public entities like us.
Since I was on the town council, I've noticed that the town's town council and the county commission both do a salute to the New Mexico flag. And if I remember correctly, Commissioner Stone had mentioned that we ought to do the same thing. I would suggest that the bylaws we currently have says the pledge. And I think that is probably covered, in fact, by the pledge. But we could make a different amendment to handle that. Under Roberts rules, those are considered opening ceremonies, and they don't actually have to be in the bylaws at all. So what I suggest, since it's permissive, we could amend the bylaws or we could just simply go ahead and do it. If that's the case, I would encourage Commissioner Stone to write the salute and send it to the Director of Community Development, which would then be sent with the email with the dates of the next meetings. And then that way, the rest of us could practice it. Does that work, Commissioner Bayless?
Sounds great to me. If it's something that's customary here in this little corner of the world, then we should probably join in.
Well, we're doing a lot of new innovative things in planning and zoning, so why not? Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. The only report I've got is a reminder. And I will give everyone, everyone should have a copy of the change to the bylaws, which we will, will address in September. It looks as if September will be a relatively short meeting. However, we should bear in mind that that meeting will be after we have met with the town council. And in fact, you have no idea what's going to come up. We may have some very good suggestions from the council. And so I would plan that, yes, we will have a September regular meeting. Commissioner?
I forgot I had a question. Why, why wasn't this a zone change that we heard today? To mixed use? The one we heard today. I was trying to expand my ears.
Chairman, Commissioner Middlestead, it was not a request for a zone change. It was a request for a conditional use permit. So in discussions with the applicant, it was the choice that they chose. They wished to retain the property as a commercial property. In their eyes, it seemed more adaptable.
Got it.
Good question. Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I wonder if letting through the air might be a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your turn. I second.
If we have a motion and a second, those who are in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Aye. And with that, we are hereby adjourned.